Get it going here, bro.
But I had to take a sound for a second.
Okay. Still. How you doing, bro? Good. I think I'll make it. Sometime I don't know, but I think I got it still.
Oh, Kevin. Did Dick call in? He did not tell them anything.
Okay, he might have been. Okay.
He's on a cruise.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Special Call Meeting Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, four P. M. Board Meeting Room Thirty-nine Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cheshire.
Here.
Mr. Ingram. Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Tucker.
Present.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Item three, items, agenda items to be added. Do we have any to be added?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. All moving on. Four, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Second by Mr. Warren. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Not? We're ready to vote. Moving to item five, new business. Five A. F Y twenty-twenty-four budget presentation. Mr. Terrell and Ms. Vanderhyde. Good evening. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Good to be here. Thank you. Uh, first, uh, I wish to thank the Board of Supervisors, the Finance Committee, the interim county administrator, and the finance director for their hard work, all of y'all's hard work prior to my arrival on this budget. Budgets are always difficult because the demand for money always exceeds the supply of it, particularly in high inflation and increasing costs for basics such as fuel and medical. This means that not all requests can be funded one hundred percent in order to achieve a balanced budget without raising taxes. This budget represents the hard work of spreading cost increases equitably across all departments and service levels. Now, next year, and immediately after this budget is passed, I will begin work on the next year's budget. So I will be more involved, more closely with the budget, and can present the budget to you myself. But for this year, again, I would like to thank those who who did work so diligently on the budget to receive the credit. Not me, the staff, all of you, because it is hard work. It does require sacrifice. So please welcome the finance officer, Ms. Kim Vanderhyde, to present the budget. Thank you.
You've never had an introduction like that before, have you?
I know.
How about that?
Good afternoon, Chairman Dalton, Vice Chairman Dudley, and all the members of the board that are represented here this afternoon. As we get started with the F Y twenty-three twenty-four budget, proposed budget presentation, I want to point out what you have in front of you if you want to make reference to it during the presentation. You will have a copy of the presentation that you can make notes and follow along. There is also a copy of the proposed summary budget, which you got in your Friday update, but it has revenues and expenditures in there. Behind the front cover are the notice of public hearings that will occur on May the sixteenth. One is for the schools and the other one is for the county. And you all will be giving us authority to advertise those budgets this afternoon after the presentation. The last, um, item that you have is the budget letter. And so, of course, we won't hit everything that's in the budget, but, of course, there's more details and more graphs that are contained in that letter that will help you as you maneuver through those summaries. So with that, I want to get started. And I would like to thank personally, um, Vaden, who has been with us throughout this budget process, as well as, um, Finance Chairman, Mr. Warren, and Mr. Tucker, who faithfully came week after week, starting in January.
Yep.
Um, we have thoroughly gone through this budget. It was a very, very hard budget to go through with limited resources, but I think we did a great job working together. So with that, we'll get started. So as I've said before, you do have a copy of the full letter from the county administrator, Mr. Terrell and Vaden Hunt. And, um, of course, this will be on our website, and it will be where you can view both of those for the public. So I want to start with a little bit of good news that we had this F Y twenty-three year. And so, um, with that, I will tell you about some of our economic development ventures that we had individually, as well as our partnerships with the city of Danville and with the town of Hurt. First, we had Amthor, who announced a large expansion. And, um, it's their actual fourth expansion in December of twenty-two. That was a thirty million dollar investment with sixty-five new jobs. I do want to point out that some of these show, um, how long we've had relationships with some of these companies. Amthor is located in the Gretna Industrial Park, which is in the northern end of the county. And they actually located here in nineteen ninety-two. And like I said, this is their fourth expansion. Axor is another longstanding company that located in the county in two thousand eleven. They, um, announced an expansion in June of twenty-two with a three-point-five million dollar investment and twenty-one new jobs. Tradesman Trucking is also another company that located in, uh, Gretna Industrial Park. Their groundbreaking was August twenty-twenty-two, and it's a four-point-five million dollar investment with thirty new jobs. Commonwealth Home Healthcare is locating in Blair's, and their project start date was June of twenty-twenty-two with a three-point-five million dollar investment and twenty-six new jobs. We had several joint economic development projects with both, um, Stanton River Regional Industrial Facilities Authority and the Danville, Pennsylvania County Regional Industrial Facilities Authorities. The first that I'd like to talk about is Wal Raven. Their letter of intent was signed in March twenty-twenty-one with a project start date of June twenty-twenty-one. Ribbon Cutting of October twenty-twenty-two was a seven-point-one million dollar investment and forty-six new jobs. Another major announcement that was made this year, but it started a long time ago, was the Center for Manufacturing Advancement that is located in the Institute for Advanced Learning. And that letter of support was actually, um, sent into the state on October eighth, two thousand eighteen. And we were actually awarded funding for that in two thousand eighteen. The grand opening was October of twenty-twenty-two. It was a twenty-eight-point-eight million dollar investment. On that very same day, the Department of Navy announced that they would be building a hundred and ten thousand square foot training facility. And that was, uh, the Center for Excellence for Additive Manufacturing. It was a fifty-four million dollar investment, and they plan to train a thousand individuals every nine months. Stanton River Plastics was a great win for us in the northern end of the county. It's in, uh, the Southern Multimodal Park, um, up in Hurt. And the letter of intent for that one was signed July the eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, with a project start date of May twenty-twenty. And they just got their certificate of occupancy within the last week. So completion date was April twenty-twenty-three. It was a thirty-four million dollar investment with two hundred new jobs. Tyson Foods is another major expansion, and this one has moved very rapidly. In fact, this picture here was taken from a video. It's a time-lapse video of this building coming out of the ground. So it came from nothing in October of twenty-twenty-two, and this picture was taken at the end of December twenty-twenty-two. So that's a three-hundred and three-hundred million dollar investment with three-hundred and seventy-six jobs, new jobs. We also had Aero Farms. That letter of intent was signed August nineteenth, twenty-nineteen. And they've been through two phases in twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-two. And their grand opening was September twenty-twenty-two with a fifty-three million dollar total investment and a hundred and fifty-eight jobs. And our most recent announcement was Zollner E. I. T. The letter of intent was signed in November of twenty-twenty-two with a project start date of March twenty-twenty-three. And that is a fourteen million dollar investment with eighty new jobs. Broadband. We've heard broadband for quite a while in there. Broadband is coming. Broadband is coming. So River Street, the county and Pennsylvania County Schools partnered back in March twenty-twenty-one. And they have been working to try to get started with this project. A lot of citizens may have some angst about, you said internet's coming. Is it really coming? So we really had a groundbreaking on March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. And so they have began work installing fiber into the ground. Um, it's taken a while to get some of those supplies. Supply chain has been an issue for them. And so they started in the Renan and Sandy Level Communities, and their next project area is Java. And I told the, um, committee yesterday that I was extremely excited because they've marked my road. And that means it's coming to my road. So I'm extremely excited. For water and sewer, we were able to, um, receive a three-million-dollar E. D. A. grant this year for many projects that I'll highlight in the next sections. Um, Horseshoe Road Project is one that's almost complete. It should be complete by year end. Some of those citizens are already tapping into the water line on one end of the road, and, uh, they'll be able to soon have that whole road complete. We'll be, um, starting construction for Robin Court Water Extension. They've been doing the engineering in F Y twenty-three, and that will be next year. Solid Waste. We were able to complete three convenience sites in F Y twenty-three, located at Climax Road, Level Run, and Meadow Ridge Court. And these are just a few pictures of some of those nice convenience sites. One win for us this year is, um, the fact that we passed our one percent school sales tax referendum. It was passed in November twenty-twenty-two. And our estimated revenue, I've got two-point-five million dollars, but it is really unknown until September, when those figures finally start coming through. Um, our tax revenue approved over the nineteen years will pay for the debt service on that debt. I did talk to our financial advisors to find out, you know, how are interest rates going to impact us? And just so you all know, had we passed our referendum the first time, we probably would not be borrowing funds until this summer. So really, in a sense, it may help us if we go into recession, that the interest rates may come down. Um, so I've got thirty-four million there. That's based on that two-point-five million dollars per year amount. Our project fund right now would be about thirty-four million. She did some pricings for me from twenty, twenty-one, and of course, now, now, in today's dollars. Um, I think it was twenty-one, twenty-two, and then today. And back in twenty-one, which was way before the referendum passed, um, we would have had a project budget of roughly thirty-eight million. In today's dollar, that would be about thirty-three point nine. So you can see the interest rate will greatly impact that. So we can only hope that the interest rate will come down before we actually have to borrow those funds. Just so you all know, that one percent will become effective July one for all of our businesses in the county. We have sent out postcards from the Finance Department. We sent those out a couple of weeks ago. We've only received maybe a couple back that maybe were closed. Um, but it was right at five hundred that we mailed out. They will get official documentation from the State Tax Department sometime in June. So we wanted to make sure they had sufficient time. We're also going to do a great media blast to let people know that they need to get started on that. And like I said, we will start seeing those revenues in September. So our F Y twenty-four budget calendar, um, we actually had you all approve our capital improvements plan back in January. That work started actually in November with our departments reviewing all of their capital needs. You all adopted and approved the updated plan, which is a five-year plan, on January seventeenth. Requests for departments were sent out in December with a due date of December thirty-first. Um, and that should say twenty-three and twenty-two. So I'm not sure what's going on there, twenty-three and twenty-two. And then the week of January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, we had meetings with our departmental and constitutional officers to review their budgets with the executive team. And then our submission today of the proposed budget is where we're at today. So we had some priorities when we were entering this twenty-twenty-four budget season. We wanted to make sure that we had realistic revenue forecasts, that we had no new taxes included in this budget. We wanted to maintain strong fund balance. We were going to, um, planning to establish a new one percent school sales tax fund. And that fund is going to be segregated so that we can see exactly where every penny of those funds go to and what they're spent on. We also are working with our, um, information management team to create a dashboard on our website that will track these expenses and revenues as we get them and as we expend them. We want to have adequate local school funding, and we want to keep pace with inflation and operational costs. We're going to fund immediate capital needs and critical capital projects in our landfill, water, and sewer and schools. We want to keep our jail project on track for their timeline, fund vital county positions, and provide adequate employee compensation. So we're going to highlight a few areas of our budget. We're going to start with the general fund. We'll touch briefly on the reassessment project, public safety, education, debt, and operations. And then our enterprise fund will go over what's happening with water and sewer and solid waste. So it's important to point out that there are no new taxes in this budget. That's the most exciting part of the whole thing. So our list of taxes are there for you to look at. Our real estate rate is still at sixty-two cent per hundred dollars of assessed value, as is mobile homes. Machinery and Tools Tax is at four dollars and fifty cent per hundred dollars, and that's assessed at ten percent of original cost. Our Merchants' Capital Tax is at two dollars and seventy-five cent per hundred of assessed value. And then our personal property tax is at nine dollars per hundred dollars, but it is at thirty percent of the market value. So reassessment, as you all know, and I'll give a little bit of a background. Um, we contracted with Bright Minds to do our general reassessment that should have taken effect back in July of twenty-twenty-two. And that reassessment, we found that we needed to invalidate those numbers, and that was done on March the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. So just after that, we knew that we needed to employ another firm to do this work for us. And so we employed Pearson's Appraisal Service, and that began, they began their work in July of twenty-twenty-two with a total contract cost of one-point-four million dollars. Our anticipated completion on this is December twenty-three with an effective date of January first, twenty-twenty-four. So they were tasked, when they started this reassessment, with looking at some newly discovered buildings and making sure they were properly assessed and added to our tax rolls. They were also supposed to look at our backlog of building permits and make sure that all of them had been added since the backlog went back to two thousand eighteen. And then thirdly, we wanted to make sure we captured all of the new construction that occurred in twenty-twenty-three. So those three items, we were able to add a real estate total value of one-hundred-and-sixty-five-point-eight million dollars for F Y twenty-twenty-four. Now, why?
Yes. Ms. Vanderhad, I just have a question, if I might. We're hearing numbers like ninety-five percent accurate that Pearson is finding that Bright Minds was, their work was about ninety-five percent accurate, without any adjustments or anything like that, which is typical to a thing. So, I mean, we made the decision. We may predicate on what was going on at the time, but it appears it may not have been the best decision since they were running that close to being the accuracy in their original numbers. So it's costing us, taxpayers, one-point-four million dollars extra. But one of the other things that always comes to mind, and I think my colleagues need to realize this, is in what we did didn't cost only one-point-four million dollars, we missed applying our assessment in a normal cycle when the real estate market was at the peak. So we will never know to the penny how much revenue was not generated and created this very stringent budget that we have this year. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
In fact, you stole some of my thunder in my next.
Well, I didn't.
Why is this an issue?
Okay.
Um, because we don't have significant revenues that we can recognize and haven't been able to do that since our last reassessment back in two thousand eighteen. Um, the county missed the peak of the real estate market, and now we're paying for two reassessments instead of just one. So that's going to be roughly two million dollars that we're going to be out on that. And, you know, you can say, well, God, yes.
Since we're on this, what was the cost of the Bright Minds?
It was just under six-hundred thousand dollars, about six-hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I think. Five-hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Um, and so that, you know, of course, we had to employ a firm, and it was not in their regular cycle. So pretty much, we didn't have very many takers. So, um, that's why the cost of it was so much more. So we'll move on to actual numbers in our budget. So our general fund revenues, um, we show this as a dollar bill so that you can see, um, how much of each dollar goes to each segment. So thirty cent on the dollar comes to us by way of revenues in real estate. Sixteen cent on the dollar for personal property. Two cent on the dollar for merchants' capital and machinery and tools. Twenty-nine cent on the dollar for state funds. Three cent on the dollar is our transfers. And then our other taxes and fees make up the remaining thirteen cent on the dollar. Our general fund expenditures, and I know if you're sitting, watching this and looking at it, you really can't see, but I'm going to draw your attention to those big pieces of the pie because we're going to talk about those in a little bit more depth. Education makes up twenty-eight percent of our general fund expenditures. Just under public safety and justice, that's at thirty-two percent. So right now, our justice and public safety make up the largest piece of the pie. It surpassed education by just a little bit. Um, so we want to talk a little bit about our public safety segment and our education. So we're going to start with public safety. Public safety makes up the largest percentage of our general fund. And I have stripped out the justice pieces, so this is strictly just public safety. And so that includes the sheriff's office, public safety paid in volunteer, jail, E-nine-one-one, detention, building inspections, animal control, and pet center. So of course, the big boys that we're going to talk about are fire and rescue and public safety because. because they're the largest segments in this particular section. So the sheriff and the jail, this graph basically shows how much money, that top line is the expenditures for jail and sheriff, which this year is at fourteen point eight million dollars of our seventy-six million dollar budget. And that bottom line is our revenues that we gain for the sheriff's office. It could be fees of the sheriff. The majority of that is state compensation funds for salaries. But you can see that line has stayed pretty stagnant for all of those years. And so we're picking up more of that locally. This is public safety for our volunteers. And so we just wanted to point out that since two thousand and eighteen up until FY twenty-three, they've received a total percentage increase of forty-four percent year over year. Now, this expense is just for their operations. It does not include capital. So I wanted to share a little bit about what that means because I want people to truly understand what that is. So the fire and rescue commission, they approved their funding matrix. And the funding matrix basically gives each of our agencies a contribution amount. And out of that contribution amount, we pay the electricity for their buildings, the heating fuel for their buildings, fuel for their vehicles. There's some insurance that's covered in that, but insurance for public safety as a whole is in a different area. So this does not include that, just some insurance that perhaps we're not covering certain vehicles. And they also receive a distribution of funds based on call volume and their EMS per call is in this amount. So as you can see, it really jumped up in FY twenty-three to twelve percent. And that's when we increased their EMS per call from fifteen dollars per call to twenty-five dollars per call. And their base contribution for all agencies went to twenty-six thousand five hundred. So it was a thirty-five hundred dollar increase for each fire agency and fifteen hundred dollars for each EMS agency to get them on an even playing field. So that was the information I wanted to share regarding them.
Ms. Vanderheide, do we have any other departments that over that same time span would reflect a forty-four percent increase?
Probably not.
Okay. Second thing is if their call volume increase increases, they're going to get considerably more money because we went from fifteen to twenty-five.
Correct.
If memory serves me correct, when we went to the twenty-five, we made it retroactive in last year's budget to July one, correct?
Correct.
When it comes to revenues, fire and rescue gets revenue, of course, from the county. And, you know, we appreciate the services they provide very much. But they also get grants. They get contributions from citizens as they raise their money. And they should because they do their own things. And they get funds for running ambulance calls from Medicare, Medicaid and insurance. Does the county receive any of that money?
No.
So it's all one hundred percent retained by the departments. So if they increase their call volume, most likely they're going to get considerably more money, not only from the county, but from those avenues of billing Medicare, Medicaid and EMS.
Correct.
And one other thing I want to make, Mr. Chairman, if I might. We're presenting this budget, Ms. Vanderheide is, and staff, along with the finance committee, with the knowledge and understanding that it's a budget, it's a working document. If there is major catastrophe or a severe need by a department and it's really an emergency justified need, it comes from fire and rescue and all, and it's a justifiable need, I don't think there's a man on this board that wouldn't support that need. So, you know, I want to advocate to them that we do have their backs and we are supportive of them to that extent if it's a true emergency. I also want to point out to them that we would love to have given everybody everything they asked for. But the fact that our assessment was thrown out primarily really made this budget almost impossible to balance without tax increase. And we certainly didn't feel like our citizens could withstand a tax increase during these economic times. So the assessment will be applicable to the next budget year and possibly more of the departments, including public safety, will be able to be, to benefit from those funds. So I just wanted to be clear about that, that there was no intent to not take care of anybody. It's a situation where, you know, they have been rewarded and should have been rewarded to a greater extent than any other department in the county going all the way back to twenty-eighteen. Is that a fair statement?
It is.
Thank you.
And just to point out, this graph for FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four are budget figures. Everything else are actuals. That's why it looks like it's the very same amount of money. But as Mr. Warren alluded to, it's dependent on their call volume. And we can only estimate what that is. So if their call volume is higher, these numbers, if we do actuals at the end of the year, may be a little bit higher than that. So of course, we're not proposing to increase that operational cost this year since they got such a large increase last year. So I also wanted to point out that while the regular operational costs for fire and rescue volunteers remain level for FY twenty-four, fire and rescue paid total cost decreased by two percent from last year. So I did want to point that out in going through this. I also wanted to go over the capital that we are still supporting our volunteers. We are providing a donation to the Cascade Fire and Rescue Department for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Brush truck to Laurel Grove Volunteer Fire Department for a hundred thousand. A fire truck for River Bend Volunteer Fire Department at two hundred thousand dollars. And one major thing that we had to start doing because our maintenance on our radios was running out and as radios start breaking down, we need to make sure our volunteers can communicate. We'll be starting a volunteer radio project. And this is just year one, so this will continue. So we had to include a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to start that new project. Onto education. Our current local contribution to our Pennsylvania County Schools for FY twenty-twenty-four is twenty-two million ninety-six thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. That is a one million dollar increase over last year or four point seven percent. It is twenty-eight percent of the general fund budget. This graph shows our standards of quality, which is the minimum amount that is required that we donate to our schools. That is the blue line. The red line is our local appropriation or the amount of money that we give to our schools. The green line that you see that's coming down is our average daily membership. So as you can see, when we hit the pandemic, our numbers really fail. It's important to know that currently the state has frozen our numbers at pre-pandemic numbers. So we're actually getting more from the state based on a higher ADM than what it actually shows from this graph. If we were able to, you know, see that, which has greatly helped us because, you know, as that, as that blue line goes down, costs for the schools won't necessarily go down with it. So they'll probably be looking for you all to make up that difference. So I just wanted to show that and also to show you that that red line continues to go up. But if you notice, the blue line looks to be moving quicker than the red line. And just so you know, our local composite index last year in FY twenty-three changed from point two four four six to point two five one one, which made that minimum requirement go up. So we gave a tremendous amount more last year to keep up with that. In addition to that, there were some state programs that used to be one hundred percent funded by the state tax, State Department, Department of Education. And of course, they have since ceased some of that. So we, in order to keep those programs, we had to fund those. So that's why in twenty-twenty-three, you can see how close we are with the blue line and the red line.
Ms. Vanderheide.
Yes.
I just want to point out to my colleagues and anybody in attendance that as you look at the standards of quality requirements, if you look at twenty-eighteen, gentlemen, we were at fifteen million. We are now just under twenty million. So we hear a lot of rhetoric about the hundred and thirty-seven counties and where we fall in that number. And they, it's an accurate statement to say, you know, we fall one thirty-three or one thirty-four. But in order for the citizens to truly understand, they must realize that we're actually, because of state mandates, we're giving considerably more money than we were back in twenty-eighteen because they're not funding things, as you stated. But I didn't want them to not go back and look at twenty-eighteen and do the true comparison. So when our citizens hear about, we only fund our system, you know, at a hundred and thirty-seven, a hundred and thirty-four, that doesn't mean we're not stepping up and giving a lot more local money because we do support our school system. It's just that once we give what the state is passing down to us, there's just not a lot of extra funds left in the budget to add to that. Thank you.
So moving on, as we met over the series of all these weeks and we were talking about education, it was decided that the Board of Supervisors wanted to make sure that the staff of the school system were well compensated for their efforts. So I just want to read this statement and this is from the board members that were on that finance committee. "The Board of Supervisors values the hard work and commitment of the PCS staff, especially teachers who work tirelessly to ensure quality education is provided to all students. Therefore, the one million dollar additional contribution shall be used to provide a five percent cost of living adjustment to all PCS staff. It is the intent of the board that this increase be given to all PCS staff, so there is no disparity between PCS staff increases and Pennsylvania County staff increases. In the event this funding is not used for this purpose, any portion will be returned to the general fund."
Does everyone understand what we're saying with that and have clarity on it? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we'll move on to our obligated debt. It's exciting news when we can say that something decreased. So our obligated debt payments for the upcoming year are scheduled at eight point five million dollars. And that is a one point four million dollar decrease from last year. We did have a bond debt for the middle schools that fell off. So that greatly helped us in balancing this budget. So that debt, the eight point five, is mostly for our middle and the high school bonds. Our middle school debt will be paid in twenty-twenty-five, which is just around the corner. And our high school debt will be paid in twenty-thirty-one. And that eight point five million dollars does not include any solid waste debt that we have.
Ms. Vanderheide, do you have a ballpark number of how much comes out of the budget monthly or annually to pay, to service those debts?
The schools. I would say of that eight point five, roughly about close to seven million is for schools. The only thing that's kind of left in the debt is for our nine-one-one towers.
Well, I know, I'm talking about the, how much monies come out of the budget each year to service those debts?
The eight point five, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it usually.
Do you make a monthly payment on it?
We usually do semi-annually.
Okay, the semi-annual payments, do you have any idea what the ballpark number is?
The total is eight point five, but just for schools, I would say roughly seven. That's the total per year. Yeah, that's where we are currently.
The point I was going to make to my colleagues is that when you see these middle schools and high schools rolling off, that positions you in a better position with the upcoming financing of jails and potentially courtrooms in the future. So it's very important to get this debt paid down.
But that's been as high as ten to eleven million dollars. So we've come a very far way.
Yeah.
Very far away.
For most of you don't, may not know this or have forgotten it, for a number of years, there was only interest paid on those debts or else they would have all been paid off. It was a terrible business practice. Shortly after, I know Mr. Scares and I were elected, we pushed to start servicing those debts. And it has served the community well. So I want the community to realize that it's important to pay that debt down because you will have other capital needs coming. So kudos to this board for continuing that process and getting those debts and getting the county in position for what we're going to face with building a new jail. Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide.
The last item we'll talk about for the general fund is our operations and employee compensation. There is a five percent cost of living increase that is proposed in this budget. We're also funding two, ten new part-time school resource officer positions for our elementary schools. There's additional funding provided in this budget to complete the new reassessment. And then our gas prices, this budget reflects a thirty-one percent increase over FY twenty-three.
Ms. Vanderheide, didn't we get some grant money to assess with those resource officers?
We did. We did.
Was it for all of them?
For the ten, yes. So the way we handled that, because the grant originally was just for ten months, Sheriff Taylor wanted to go on and make sure we could start drawing some of that money. So the current SRO positions that we had, which were full-time, were placed into the grant. So, you know, he kind of thought outside of the box. Well, if we hired ten new, because one of the things that the Department of Criminal Justice Services said is that we could just, this was not to supplement what we already had. The intention was to expand it. So in order to qualify for money for ten positions, you had to add ten positions. So, you know, Sheriff Taylor said, well, maybe it would make sense for elementary schools to have ten part-time school resource officers. They would work full-time during the school year, but of course, they wouldn't work in the summertime. They would only work when school is in session. Our current school resource officers work year-round. So when they're not working in the schools, they're working, you know, out in the community and doing other things, serving papers and that kind of thing. So we did have to add, but you are correct, we did get a grant.
How long, how long is that grant?
They really haven't given us an end date. I do know that after the ten months, it won't be a hundred percent covered. But just so you know, all, maybe one or two of the SROs were paid at the amount that the grant was approved for. Most of them were being paid more. So we're already having to supplement the grant. And of course, it's just for salaries. It doesn't include cars or any kind of equipment or guns, that kind of thing. It doesn't include cars or any kind of equipment or guns, that kind of thing. Any more questions? We'll move on then to our enterprise fund, and we're almost done. This is the last piece of the puzzle. Water and sewer. So I mentioned that we've been doing the engineering for Robin Court Waterline Extension. So that construction should begin in this current fiscal year. And we're hopeful that we're gonna get a grant to do that construction. The EDA water and sewer improvements for that three million dollar grant that we got this year, that will begin in FY-2024. And actually, we've started getting engineering estimates and setting up some purchase orders for these projects. So the following locations will get some water and sewer improvements, and that's Mount Herman, Hodnitz Mill, Road, Ragsdale, Vista Point, Blair's, and Brockway. And there are also some monies to help with some other critical deficiencies in the area of water and sewer and other areas of the county. Solid waste. This is pretty much, other than those ten SROs, this is really the only other fund that we really saw a big increase in adding positions. But just so you all know, our enterprise funds are self-sufficient. So water and sewer revenues from customers pays for everything that goes on in the water and sewer department. We do not supplement either of these funds in any kind of way. And then the hundred and twenty dollar household solid waste fee, as well as three contracts that we currently have for outside trash, is what funds the solid waste program. So we are adding nine part-time convenience site operators. And that's for the Meta Ridge Court, new facility that's located on 29 between Chatham and Grottna. It's a beautiful facility, if you can call it that, for sanitation. But I would encourage people to go out and visit it. We're also adding two sanitation drivers and one heavy equipment operator and mostly because of the increased volume that will come from that site. We're also expanding the Mount Herman Convenience Site in the summer of 2023. And we're also looking at future expansions of convenience sites at the Berry Hill area and Motley. We're also going to complete Cell C. We've been working on Phase Three, and it says expansion, but we're not going to do that in FY-24. But we will have to complete Cell C at the landfill. So that is slated to begin construction in 2024. So to list those priorities from the beginning, yes.
Ms. Vanderheide, I'd like to make one other comment.
Okay.
And actually, I want to congratulate my fellow board members for having the foresight to use our enterprise fund by taking some outside trash from Henry County and Danville and Bedford because that's why we're able to see these improvements and new collection sites that will better serve our citizens without having to have a tax increase to do it. So kudos to you, gentlemen, for having the foresight to approve that. Thank you.
Any other questions before we finish out? So as you can tell from all these priorities, and I won't read them again, but you can see we have check marks by all of those that we feel like we have sufficiently included what is needed for us to finish out FY-24. And hopefully, things won't blow up on us and we can keep costs down and we can move right on through to FY-25. But we have to get through FY-24. So our next steps, of course, today, we're doing our budget presentation. And after you all have heard this and have asked questions, I do need authority to advertise both the school budget and the county budget. So we'll get that today. And then May third, the advertisement will run in the Star Tribune. And there will be two separate block ads, one for the schools and one for the county. Our public hearing will be on your regular board meeting night, and that's May sixteenth at seven PM. And there will be two separate public hearings that have to be held. And then May twenty-third, you do have to wait seven days after your public hearing because this is your annual budget. Most budget approvals can be done the same night as a public hearing, but this one you have to wait. So that approval will be done on May third, and that'll be at four PM. And that'll be in here in this board meeting room. Any additional questions or anything that you have?
Yes, Ms. Vanderheide, I have one. Our county administrator and all has already alluded to this, but I would like to take the time, Mr. Chairman, as chairman of the Finance Committee, to thank Ms. Vanderheide for once again showing us, as I said earlier, that she almost walks on water when it comes to the budget. And also thank Intrum County Administrator, Mr. Hunt, for his wisdom and participation in the process and for all of the members of the Finance Committee. And I don't want to be remiss in recognizing Sheriff Taylor, who, as Ms. Vanderheide alluded, thought outside of the box, did a lot of good things to assist us with the budget in keeping it under control this year. Because I want to reiterate, it was a tough task to get this thing balanced without any tax increase. And we definitely, this entire board, I think I can speak for everyone, did not want to see a tax increase at this time. So thank you all very much. I very much appreciate it. And as a member of this board and as a taxpaying citizen of Pennsylvania County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. All right, gentlemen, moving on to item five B. Can we get a motion to advertise this budget?
Mr. Chairman, as Finance Chairman, I would like to recommend that we allow staff to advertise this budget, both our budget and the school budget. Second?
Second by Mr. Tucker. Motion made by Mr. Warren. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And I was part of Finance, but I really want to thank Kim for working hard on this, willing to meet with Supervisor Warren and Supervisor Tucker. They did a bang-up job. They kept us abreast of what was going on. And it took a lot of grinding to get it out, but you did it. And I just want to thank you publicly as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any more comments? I would like also to thank everyone that worked on the Finance, all the staff. And hopefully, we can get this budget through and get it advertised and get it approved. All right. Any more comments or not, gentlemen? We're ready to vote.
Yes, sir.
All right. Carrier six, sir. Ready to advertise. All right. Any more models from your board members? Do you have anything, Mr. Torrell? Anything you'd like to add? Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
All right. Gentlemen, the meeting-